All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our board meeting. We are going to have the invocation this evening by Father Alan Fisher of the Angelican Church of St. Francis of Jonesboro, be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Ready to get the throng? Let's do it. Let us pray. Father, this evening as we beseech thy grace and favor to be upon this meeting in order to grant thy servants both the wisdom and ability to faithfully provide for the well-being of all thy people, please know that we do so humbly. We confess that all of us here present have strayed away from thy ways like lost sheep, and we beg thy mercy to bring us back for thy glory and our salvation. Please forgive us where we have failed you and restore us effectually to thy side where we can find grace and favor because then and only then can we know and have the power to carry out thy will. May this meeting be an offering to you heavenly Father, as we seek to bring thy kingdom and will here to earth. For the sake of thy people and thy glory, we ask this heavenly Father, in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the February 2nd, 2016 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that the interviews for the zoning and administrative position be removed from the agenda.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing on, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendment.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Approval of the January 19, 2016 Regular Business Meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January 19, 2016 Regular Business Meeting minutes.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we will now have public comment. We do have one citizen that has signed up to speak before the board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mr. Carl Swenson.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. I come before you tonight as a man that lives in Stockbridge, the unincorporated part, and I'm mad. I'm mad as heck. I'm mad because you have an entire police force out there that is writing tickets for failure to carry insurance, and yet this entire county and its fleet of 1,395 plus or minus has zero insurance other than what you so claim is self-insurance. Good job. But more importantly, I'm mad because each and every one of you took an oath to the Constitution. An oath! That's a solemn promise that you will uphold that document. That document gives none of us any rights. It tells you what the limitations of government are. It guarantees that you will make sure that our freedoms, there's five of them that is really concerned with, you know what I mean? Five of them, inalienable rights, that none of you seem to really give a darn about. And I'm mad because I watched, I watched a video from the FBI, an agency by the way that is not even covered in the Constitution. It's not even allowed, but yet here they are. And in Burns County, Oregon, in cold blood, they murdered LaVoy Fennicombe. Murdered him! And then put it on YouTube or put it on their channel for people to see. These are the same people that you're allowing to come in here, and you're allowing the IRS to come in here and wreak havoc with the people in back of me. They have no business being here. That's a foreign agency. Do you care? No. No. Are you going to do anything? No. But it's your duty to do so. It's your duty to know that in 1957, the Georgia Legislature passed something called the Georgia Memorial to Congress. Anybody aware of that? No. That document clearly states, both houses and the governor signed it, that the Fourteenth Amendment was an illegal document. Not the Thirteenth, don't take me wrong here guys, but the Fourteenth Amendment, an illegal document, and most that followed after that. This is your Constitution. This is the document you signed as a contract with us. How are you keeping it up? You're allowing federal tax dollars to come into this county? You're inviting them in with the strings attached so that they can now come in and wreak havoc with us? All of these grants, awards, and free money! There is no free money. It all comes with strings. Their strings! And they go against us. You have allowed-
I believe your time is up, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you.
Swenson. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this does conclude public comment. We do have two proclamations. The first proclamation whereby Clayton County observes Severe Weather Awareness Week, February 1st through the 5th, 2016, as presented by Chairman Turner. Is anyone present to receive this proclamation? And if the members of the board would please rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation.
February 1st through the 5th, 2016. Whereas, each year Clayton County citizens face a threat of severe weather events such as lightning, thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, hailstorms, tornadoes, and hurricanes, all potentially dangerous to life, health, and property. And whereas, it is essential that effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness continue for the benefit of all. Clayton County citizens are encouraged to have multiple ways to receive weather alerts, including monitoring local media, N-O-double-A weather radio, Ready-GA smartphone app, and access to Clayton County's ReadyClayton.com website. And whereas, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services, all departments and agencies of Clayton County Government, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, and the National Weather Service are committed to continuing efforts to inform citizens on safety and severe weather preparedness procedures so that they may better protect themselves, their families, neighbors, and their communities. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of February 1st through the 5th, 2016, a severe weather awareness week in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and to participate in the various awareness programs scheduled during the week. In witness thereof, I appear and to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of February in the year 2016. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
And our final proclamation for this evening whereby Clayton County recognizes 911 dispatcher, Deonte R. Smith, who played an instrumental role in assisting an assault victim. Is Mr. Smith here? Members of staff?
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County honors Deonte R. Smith, Senior 911 Dispatcher. Whereas, Deonte R. Smith began his career with the Clayton County Police Department in April 2013 as a dispatcher for the E-911 Communications Division. He was promoted shortly after in August 2014 as a senior dispatcher. And whereas, on December 28, 2015, Deonte Smith answered a call from a female in distress. Dispatcher Smith listened carefully and obtained the female's location without fully knowing what was happening. And whereas, using his ability to think quickly, his E-911 training, and years of experience, dispatcher Smith immediately entered the call as unknown trouble and dispatched police to her location. And whereas, as the call progressed, the female began talking to dispatcher Smith as if she was talking to her boyfriend. It was apparent at that time the man instructing her was also assaulting her. Dispatcher Smith maintained the role of her boyfriend and stayed on the line until the police arrived. And whereas, Deonte Smith played a critical and life-saving role in the rescue of the female caller. His actions were of those characterized as an exceptional dispatcher and reflect credit upon himself and the Clayton County E-911 Communications Department. And whereas, dispatcher Smith and the Clayton County E-911 Communications Department have received local and national recognition for this incident. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners honor and recognize Deonte R. Smith for his outstanding and exemplary service to the citizens of Clayton County, Georgia. Now therefore I, Gail B. Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and recognize Senior 911 Dispatcher, Deonte R. Smith, for his commitment to the Clayton County E-911 Communications Department, and for the invaluable service he provides to the citizens of our county. In witness thereof, I appear and to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the second day of February in the year 2016.
The board will now hear a presentation on the status of the blueprint plan as presented by Pedro Cherry, Chairman of the Atlanta-Eritreopolis Alliance, and John Tully with the Atlanta Regional Commission.
And as they're coming forward, I'm going to like, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the new mayor of Morrow, Mr. Jeff Datar. Please give him a round of applause. And I know he has business here, but we also got to recognize a former governor, Governor And Mr. Cherry, before you start your presentation, I'd be remiss if I did not make mention of the excellent job that you and John Tully have been doing with the Eritreopolis Alliance and all the work, hard work that you're putting into that. It's truly going to be a benefit and asset for Clayton County what we are planning here. So please proceed on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you Board of Commissioners for time on your agenda this evening. I would like to first of all thank Clayton County for your time and effort and financial commitment over the past two years in support of the Eritreopolis-Atlanta Alliance. And I want to give a special thanks to your chairman who's been involved personally. So his involvement has lent a lot of credibility to the effort, so we really appreciate you being involved. So today we're going to give an overview of the alliance and our efforts to date, our successes, and our plans going forward. And to do that, I will like to invite Addie Weber. Addie is a consultant with Jacobs. Jacobs is a firm that the alliance hired about a year and a half ago to develop the blueprint, so she will give you an overview. And we'll be open for any questions that you have, any comments or suggestions, so we can make sure this is a success for Clayton County and entire Arrow ATL area. So Addie, please.
Thank you. Pedro, and thank you Commissioners. My name is Addie Weber. I am with Jacobs Engineering, as Pedro mentioned, and we were brought on about a year ago, which is hard to believe, to complete this blueprint process. So I wanted to spend a few minutes today just to give you an overview of what an Eritreopolis is, although you guys are well aware where we are in the process and where we're going forward. So what is an Eritreopolis? A lot of people have these questions, but it's really looking at the airport and making sure we are leveraging it to the best of our abilities, making sure the region and local and regional municipalities and counties are capitalizing on this huge asset that we have. We're not the only one doing this. This is only 25 out of, you know, 50 cities around the world who are really embarking on this venture. And Atlanta is at the forefront, and I think that is a great place to be as one of the busiest airports in the world. Some of your competitors, you have Denver International Airport. It's a little bit different than Atlanta. It's 9,000 acres with very little development on it. But what makes Denver interesting is, is they have all this land, and so how do they structure it? And like Clayton County, they have transit coming into the site. So thinking about how you structure TOD development in the long term, what does that look like? How does that benefit not only aeronautical revenue but off non-aeronautical revenue? So Denver is an interesting case study. And Memphis is also very interesting. It's a tighter airport, it's got FedEx, it's got several municipalities, just like the Atlanta Airport, and working with that. And part of Memphis's story is the collective win, looking at how do we leverage all these great assets around the Eritreopolis area to benefit the greater, greater good? And how do we make sure that we're marketing it as one Eritreopolis? And that's what the alliance has really been working forward to. You know, it's, it's interesting, it's $32.5 billion of direct economic impact, and that was from a year ago, and that's only increased. But you see, it's really complex, and it's the biggest driving force in the metro economy and in, you know, within Georgia. So how do, are we making sure that we are leveraging it right to help Clayton County and the municipalities that are structured right around it? In 2011, they started having this discussion on, are we using it to the best of our abilities and what needs to be done? So the alliance was created, and it looked at a vision which obviously took home to leverage the opportunity, but also the goals, which were improve the perception of the Atlanta-Eritreopolis area. How do we increase economic investment? How do we make sure all the municipalities are working towards this collective win? And there's some key catalytic sites within the area. Are they structured properly? What can we better do to unlock that potential? Like Mountain View. There have been some really great recent developments that have happened since the formation. I mentioned the MARTA expansion into Clayton County. I think that's an amazing opportunity to look at how do you structure that link not only to the airport but to downtown Atlanta. You have, you know, a five-star hotel coming in at the Portia headquarters. How many cities can say they have that? I mean, the Gateway Center, Marriott, a Portia Hotel, the Flight Museum, these are all assets that any community would be unbelievably proud to have, and yet you guys have all this right here, and are we using it to the best of our ability? So what has the alliance accomplished? Well, it's accomplished a lot in the two years that it's actually been formed. Developed a network of partners, which I think is really important, not only you guys but also globally. The Smart Airports Conference brought in 600 delegates from 16 countries. So it's looking at Paris and Amsterdam. What are our competitors doing? What do we have that they don't have? What makes us unique and special, and what makes us stand out? Trade missions. The project I worked on, which was the Atlanta-Eritreopolis Blueprint, which was a high-level framework. The Eritreopolis Atlanta brand, which is, this is the second opportunity we've had to kind of begin to showcase this brand and how do we begin to use it moving forward. And our investors, which continue to grow, and Clayton County is one of those huge investors that really helped kickstart this effort, and it's only expanding. Fulton County, South Fulton, it's just, the list keeps growing and growing. And, you know, with this budget, it's really looking at how do we best market moving forward. As I mentioned, the Smart Airports Conference, that was last year, I believe in April, 600 delegates really talking about what are the concerns, what are the needs, what are the growing economic industries that are happening around airports? What are Atlanta's strengths, and how do we unlock those? As I mentioned, Eritreopolis, Atlanta, this is the unveiling of the brand. I believe Pedro gave a presentation last week, so this is the second time it's kind of an out in the forefront. Part of the alliance's effort is going to be how do we kind of begin to sell this as one Eritreopolis instead of a whole group of 10 cities, three counties, and that expansion? So the blueprint, which was a project we worked on about a year ago, really looked at providing a high-level strategic framework for growth and development. And part of that strategic framework really looked at time distance, and it's not as the crow flies, it's as a five-minute drive time, a 10-minute drive time. And we started out with kind of a tight border, about a 10-mile boundary, but that quickly expanded as you look at what is the real drive times, what is the real generator? You know, it expands all the way up, you know, to Buckhead, to Sandy Springs, all the way down to the Port of Savannah. But really what the time distance really looks at is are we putting catalytic industries in areas that are best supported by the airport and by industry, and making sure that is aligning? And if it's not, what needs to happen to better unlock that potential in areas within the Eritreopolis area? There are a lot of industry sectors that we looked at. There were five that really rose to the top, and these five were because of either social infrastructure in place, hard infrastructure in place. This isn't all of them, but you have aerospace, which is kind of a no-brainer. You have logistics, you have the Port of Savannah, you have 75, 85, 285, so you have the access to interstates, you have the food ad business. That is a huge business. How do we capitalize on the state farmers market? You have Mountain View, which is just north of there. Is that, is that structured properly to unlock that potential? Multimedia production. We know Georgia's a huge film industry here, and a lot of movies are filmed here, but a lot of movies do post-production back in LA. What do we need to do to help keep them here? Workforce, education, things like that. And then finally, bio-life sciences. The pharma industry, how do we better capitalize on that? There was several catalytic projects we looked at, and a lot of those are based on this time-distance relationship. And as municipalities go forward, we'll be looking at, you know, does Mountain View have, say, the retail destination, retail outlet center, or is it more industrial? Would that compete with something that's happening on the west, on the west side of the airport? How do you leverage that, making sure there's, you know, successful competition, but there's unique areas of opportunity to help it grow? And then we applied that, and we really looked at the application of these, these industries around the airport. So we see the airport as the heart, and the area around it is strengthening that. So you have, you know, College Park with Airport City, you have Haightville, you have Delta and Portia, you have Mountain View, we're calling it Cargo City to the south, and you have these key linkages. And how do you strengthen those that really kind of build off the heart? And the expansion of MARTA into Clayton County, making sure that links back to all the opportunities that are around the airport. So looking ahead, there were four big areas that we saw the alliance and the area around kind of helping moving this forward. They have a lot of work to do, but I think you guys can, can get it done. But the four categories were organizational, identifying champions like Clayton County, branding and marketing, which is something that we've already undertaken, land use, making sure the catalytic sites that we've identified in this blueprint are really ready to go, and establishing that one-stop shop. So when somebody comes on, you don't need a name like Portia to get in the door. It's any industry that can come in, can find the right location where they need to be and they're supported. And transportation, increasing walkability around existing and proposed MARTA stations and truck access. So what's going on in 2016? There's a lot, continuing to promote the Atlanta-Eritreopolis brand, continuing to partner with existing CID's, creating workforce collectives. This is something that's kind of taken legs around, how do we kind of capitalize on that? And additional studies that will help build the Eritreopolis initiative. One of them is a Greenway study that has kind of gained some legs and how do we kind of move that forward? And finally, why this matters, the airport is a regional and statewide economic engine, so just making sure we're leveraging it appropriately. So the blueprint, blueprint does that, and the alliance board continues to build on that. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Are there any questions by the board? I have one. We, I don't see a presentation or a copy of it. Is there a way we can get a copy of that?
Yes.
Please. If you could just make sure all the commissioners get a copy of that, I would appreciate it. And again, thank you for the work that you've done on this. Come a long way in a year, so appreciate y'all being here this evening. Madam Clerk?
The board will consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Ms. Brewer, please take them together unless a board member selects, take one separately.
Yes, number four.
Good evening.
Hold on a second, did you have one? Okay. Proceed on, Ms. Brewer.
Okay, thank you. The first is a recommendation for the purchase of Dell computers using statewide contract 2016-01 SS-SWC 99999 SPD-T201 20702. The recommendation is utilize the statewide contract to purchase computers for the Information Technology Department from Dell Computer Incorporated, located in Round Rock, Texas, in an amount of $180,088. Funding is available through the fiscal year ending 2016 Information Technology Minor Computer Equipment Funds. The second is request to sell surplus vehicles and equipment- The second is a request to sell surplus vehicles and equipment. Central Services is requesting the necessary approval from the Board of Commissions to sell surplus county property and vehicles at absolute auction. The list of surplus property and equipment is attached to your memo as Exhibit A, and the list of surplus vehicles and equipment is attached as Exhibit B. Next is a recommendation to approve an agreement with GovDeals at 100 Capital Commerce Boulevard in Montgomery, Alabama utilizes a National Joint Purchasing Alliance contract. This is a revenue generating contract with the cost for auction services being deducted from the sale proceeds in an amount not to exceed 5% of the gross receipts. We also have a contract with Adisa to sell our vehicles and some equipment, but this is for a contract that's more geared to specialty items and things that would be more geared to people looking on GovDeals. Skipping the next one and going to the recommendation for the renewal of the county's crime policy. The crime policy provides coverage to the county for losses due to employee theft, dishonesty, robbery, computer forgery, or alteration, funds transfers, and other criminal acts. The recommendation is to renew the county's crime policy with Berkeley Regional Insurance Company utilizing Epic as broker for the period of March 1st, 2016 through March 1st, 2017 with a premium in the amount of $9,960. This is a decrease by $2,728 from last period. The next one is a recommendation to renew the county's public official position schedule bond with Western Surety Company utilizing Epic as broker for the period of March 1st, 2016 through March 1st, 2017 with a premium in the amount of $11,578. This is a decrease of $209 from the last period. Funding is available through the county's general fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
It's a recommendation for award for RFP 1520 Banking and Merchant Services for Clayton County, Georgia annual contract. The recommendation is to the lowest responsible proponent meeting the specifications with Wells Fargo Bank North America located in Atlanta, Georgia. Funding is available through the bank credit card services charges account. The evaluation tabulation summary, department recommendation agreement are attached to the memo for your recommendation. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized the Chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstain for cause.
Okay, it's two-two. Let's state your cause.
I'm an employee of Wells Fargo Advisors.
Ms. Bivins, who do we, who have we used in the past?
We're currently with Wells Fargo.
And how long have we been with Wells Fargo?
Uh, let's see. Well, it started out as one bank, and that bank was acquired by Wachovia, and then it's with...
South Trust.
South Trust, yes, thank you. It was South Trust, and then South Trust was acquired by Wachovia, and Wells Fargo, of course, acquired Wachovia. So we haven't had a banking RFP or done anything since years, way before any of us probably came on.
Twenty years.
Yeah. So why is there an issue now?
I don't have an issue.
He's abstaining, the other two. Have we had any problems with Wachovia Bank?
No, we have not with Wells Fargo. No, we have not.
Wells Fargo, I'm sorry.
No, we have not.
It says there the highest-scoring vendor with the lowest cost, so if we go with the next vendor, we're going to pay more money, correct?
That is correct. And actually, the cost that we're getting with Wells Fargo are even lower than what we are currently getting because we're operating under an old South Trust bank agreement, and they've just accepted what they purchased when they, what they acquired, rather, during each transition.
What's the impact of us not making a decision tonight?
There's not going to be any, we will forego a savings in our bank service fees, but to our current budget impact, there's none because we are, we're currently budgeted to pay what we're paying now.
What about a disruption in services?
None.
So you said we were going to forego savings?
We will forego some savings.
How much?
It depends on our volume. If our volume does not change, they prepared an analysis based on our June usage, and they annualized it for 12 months based on the pricing that they're proposing. And our current price would be $64,874. The revised charges would be $53,000, savings of $11,699. However, those, it would be even more than that because right now, because of the banking industry, we have a non-interest-bearing account. However, we get a credit for our funds that we do have in there that offsets our fees, and our fees are based only on our usage, so we don't incur any fees unless we use a service from the bank. So they also agreed to increase our earnings credit from 35 basis points to 0.35 percent by five basis points to 40 basis points, which is 0.4 percent, so we would earn a little more money as well, but our fees would decrease as well.
Okay. Fiscally responsible to do it?
In my opinion, yes, ma'am.
All right. Unless there's an amendment to the vote, then it's a no vote. Thank you.
The Board will consider the request of Ramona Bivins, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I have, I think, five items for your consideration this evening.
Please take them together.
Okay. Budget Amendment 2-25 is for other general government. It's to amend the budget in the amount of $700,000 from fund balance to provide funds resulting from the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority. Budget Amendment 2-26 is for the Sheriff's Office. It's to amend in revenue in the amount of $80,758 received from the Department of Justice for the State Criminal Alien Program. Budget Amendment 4-58 for SPOST 2009 is to appropriate funds from the SPOST fund balance in the amount of $20,500 to provide funding for fencing and lighting replacement at Bonanza Mini Park Tennis Courts. Budget Amendment 4-59 is also for 2009 SPOST, to appropriate funds from the SPOST fund balance in the amount of $47,249 to provide funding for the Cisco IPICS implementation and additional equipment needed for the PSDN project. Budget Amendment 4-60 is from 2009 SPOST, to appropriate funds from SPOST fund balance in the amount of $20,000 to provide funding for renovations to the building at Rivers Edge Greenway.
Is there a motion?
I hope that we approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Chief Staff Attorney, Kristi Barnes.
Take them together, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, members of the Board. First is Resolution Number 2016-17, which is a resolution to establish the process for the petition for and placement of parking-related signage within unincorporated Clayton County to establish the form of the petition for placement of parking-related signage, to provide for the costs of the parking-related signage, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2016-18 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to grant a facility use request and enter into a license agreement with Rainbow House Incorporated to sponsor and host a 5K fundraiser race at Clayton County International Park. This will be April 16th from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Next is Resolution Number 2016-19, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to grant the facility use request and enter into a license agreement with the Humane Society and SPCA of Clayton County Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which a car and motorcycle show will be hosted at the Clayton County International Park. This will be Saturday, April 23rd from approximately 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2016-20 is a resolution to authorize Clayton County to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Department of Revenue for the use of certain motor vehicle records. Resolution Number 2016-21 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement to allow the Haley Bankhead Foundation Incorporated to sponsor and host a 5K walk-in run for childhood cancer awareness at Clayton County International Park. This event will be May 14th, 2016, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Next is Resolution Number 2016-22, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a professional services contract with Expert Discovery to perform a forensic audit to detect, document, and arrange for collection of unpaid 911 and/or E911 fees that should have been remitted by telecommunications providers to the county. It will authorize the county to enter into a legal services agreement with the Barnes Law Group LLC and Harris Penn Lowry LLP as special legal counsel for Clayton County in connection with the recovery of underpaid, uncollected, and/or unremitted 911 and/or E911 fees due to the county. This resolution will authorize, will also authorize the county to terminate its existing agreement with Expert Discovery. Resolution Number 2016-23 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a performance partnership agreement with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, Homeland Security, in accordance with the fiscal year 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant Program, and to accept funds on behalf of the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services Department, and to provide for the terms and conditions under which the funds will be utilized. This is a grant with a total project cost of $155,654, with $77,827 being reimbursed to the county. And finally, is a request for remission in the matter of State of Georgia versus DeAnthony Bernard Gather, and free-at-last bail bonds in the amount of $1,750.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second on any of these items? Well, I guess they all fail due to the lack of second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request an executive session for personnel and litigation.
Items 19 and 20 are appointments to the Board of Ethics. These two do not require a vote of the Board. This is just to acknowledge receipt of the appointment of Shontiria Martin Stokes to the Board of Ethics to fill a seat as appointed by the Clayton County Bar Association. The next is an appointment of Samuel C. Dixon to the Board of Ethics to fill a seat as appointed by the Clayton State University Office of the President. Item 21 is an appointment to the Board of Ethics to fill a seat as appointed by the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. The initial term is four years, expiring on February 2nd, 2020. Mr. Chairman, do you have a nominee?
I do. I'd like to nominate Mr. Walter Nix. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next item is an appointment to the Board of Ethics to fill a seat as appointed by the Board of Commissioners. I did want to clarify that the individual, the citizen that serves in this seat must live in District 1. This is not specifically the appointment of the Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Gregory.
I nominate Mr. Joshua Byrd of Ellenwood.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next five appointments are appointments to the Animal Control Board. The first is to fill the unexpired term of Paige Turner and a full term. Ms. Turner has resigned. The term is for four years, expiring on March 12th, 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Claudia De Guzman.
I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next is an appointment to the Animal Control Board to fill the expiring term of Gloria McCain. This term is four years, expiring on March 12th, 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations? The next is to fill the expiring term of Jim Carter. This term is for four years, expiring on March 12th, 2020. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I spoke with Mr. Carter. He'd like to continue to serve. With that, I'd make a motion for reappointment.
I will second that. Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next is to fill the expiring term of Tamika West. This term is two years, expiring on March 12th, 2018. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I spoke to Ms. West. She does not want to serve any longer.
Hearing none, the next is to fill the expiring term of Dr. Don McMillan, Sr. The term is for two years, expiring on March 12th, 2018. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I spoke with Dr. McMillan, Sr., today, and he'd like to continue to serve. He's had a motion to reappoint.
I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this does conclude the agenda for this evening. If there is no further business, there was a request to go into executive session on personnel and litigation.
All right, is there a motion going to executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.